Okay, it's 5:30, so we'll call the meeting to order. If you would stand, please, and join me in a moment of silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, please be seated. Our first item is to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting held on June 13, so I'd ask Commissioners if anyone has changes to the minutes. And if not, do I have a motion to approve them as submitted?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Washington is a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lorindo, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. At the beginning of each meeting, we have a public comment period just for any general items anyone wants to bring up. For each item on the agenda, there will be a public hearing, so if you're here to address a specific item, it's probably better to wait until that item comes up. But if anyone has any general comments, now's the time to make them. And seeing none, we'll proceed to our first item. It's Comprehensive Plan, Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment, Plymouth Harbor LLC, from county rural to city residential low suburban, zero to 3.5 dwelling units per acre. The owner applicant is Plymouth Harbor LLC. Location is west of Plymouth Sorento Road and north of Yawthers Road, and we have a staff presentation.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner 2 with the Cities Planning Division. The applicant is proposing a small-scale future land use amendment from county rural to residential low suburban for approximately 4.87 acres. The subject property is highlighted in yellow and located north of Yawthers Road and west of Plymouth Sorento Road. Single-family homes and agricultural properties are in the vicinity. The property is owned Transitional District, and the applicant has applied for the RSF-1B zoning district, which is on the next agenda item. The proposed residential low suburban future land use is compatible with the proposed RSF-1B zoning district and properties in the surrounding area. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the proposed small-scale future land use amendment to residential low suburban, and the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed future land use amendment consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the change of future land use designation from county rural to city residential low suburban, subject to the findings of the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I are available to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? And is the applicant just available for questions and doesn't want to make a presentation? Okay, very good, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I find the proposed future land use amendment consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the change of future land use designation from county rural to city residential low suburban, subject to the findings of the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lorindo, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Gussler, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Our next item is the change of zoning for Plymouth Harbor LLC, from T Transitional and RSF-1A Residential Single Family Estate to RSF-1B Residential Single Family Large-Lot District. Owner applicant is Plymouth Harbor LLC. Location, west of Plymouth Sorento Road and north of Yawthers Road, and we have a staff presentation.
The applicant is proposing a rezoning from T Transitional District and RSF-1A Residential Single Family Estate District to RSF-1B Residential Single Family Large-Lot District for approximately 29.62 acres. The subject properties are highlighted in blue, north of Yawthers Road, west of Plymouth Sorento Road, and as a further frame of reference, the southwestern parcel was the parcel that was mentioned in the previous future land use amendment.
Which one is Plymouth Sorento then?
That one right there.
That line?
Yeah, the black line.
Now where is it? The territory we're going to dig out?
Sir, if I could ask you to wait until after the presentations, then we'll open it for public comment.
The proposed RSF-1B zoning is compatible with the existing and previously proposed residential low suburban future land use designation and for the properties in the surrounding area. That's another depiction of the four subject parcels, with the southwestern parcel colored in blue. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the proposed rezoning to RSF-1B Residential Single Family Large-Lot District, and the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from T Transitional District and RSF-1A Residential Single Family Estate District to RSF-1B Residential Single Family Large-Lot District for the properties owned by Plymouth Harbor LLC, located west of Plymouth Sorento Road and north of Yawthers Road. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff?
I do. The difference between 1A and 1B on the density is what exactly? As far as the-
A lot of it comes down to the future land use designation, so the residential low suburban future land use permits a maximum of 3.5 dwelling units per acre.
On the B?
For the RSF-1B, the standards are different in terms of the permissible lot width, permissible living area.
For the same dwelling units per acre?
If I could tell my LDC briefly, I'll be right back, and just to check on that note, but the residential low suburban does permit up to 3.5 dwelling units per acre.
Okay.
Okay, it's the same, 3.5 dwelling units per acre, yeah.
I, 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 thank you.
Okay, and if the applicant doesn't have a presentation, any questions of the applicant? Okay, good, then we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item?
Sir?
Okay.
Did any of you have a question?
No, I guess not. Okay, and seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. Find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from T Transitional District and RSF-1A Residential Single Family Estate District to RSF-1B Residential Single Family Large-Lot District for the properties owned by Plymouth Harbor LLC, located west of Plymouth Sorento Road and north of Yawthers Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Gussler, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a Comprehensive Plan, Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment with CHS Management, from county rural to mixed-use, maximum two dwelling units per acre and 1.0 floor area ratio. Owner applicant is CHS Management Corp. Location is north of Ponkin Pines Road and east of Plymouth Sorento Road, and we have a staff presentation.
The applicant is proposing a small-scale future land use amendment from county rural to mixed-use for approximately 8.85 acres. Subject property is highlighted in yellow, located north of Ponkin Pines Road and east of Plymouth Sorento Road. Single-family homes and agricultural properties are in the vicinity. The property is owned Transitional District, and the applicant has applied for the MUESGT zoning district for the Mixed-Use Eastshore Gateway zoning district, which is on the next agenda item. The proposed Mixed-Use Future Land Use is compatible with the proposed MUESGT zoning district and properties in the surrounding area. In accordance with the Comprehensive Plan Policy 3.5, the maximum allowable residential density is two dwelling units per acre. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the proposed Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment to Mixed-Use, and the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed future land use amendment consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the change of future land use designation from county rural to mixed-use, subject to the findings of the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? Any questions of the applicant?
I do, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's all right. The recommended motion, at the end you say, "subject to the findings of the staff report." What's that about?
That's pretty much just a term of art that we put in the staff report. That's pretty much just a term of art that we put in the staff report, so the findings of the staff report are pretty much what's contained within the staff report, the policies that are cited for the Comprehensive Plan.
And the staff report is what's distributed to us?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, other questions of staff? Any questions of the applicant? Yes, are you, are you the applicant?
No.
Oh, okay, good. Now, if you would come up, please, and give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Isaiah Robinson, and I'm with 3535 Plymouth Sorento Road. I'm adjacent, is this going to be apartments, homes, or commercial? What is this projection, this right here? That's all I know.
Okay, I'm going to ask staff to address that, if you would, please.
Apologies, it doesn't appear that the applicant is available this evening, but in this case, it's just the proposed future land use and rezoning, and so the site plan is inconclusive at this time.
Okay.
For the uses, yeah.
Okay, what I think what he's saying is this is early in the game, this is just a land use change, so any further proposals would come in later and be subject to public hearings.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Good, thank you. Anyone else wish to appear before the commission on this item? Yes, sir, would you come up and give us your name and address for the record, please?
My name's William Duval. I live at 3327 Little Joe Court, been there over 30 years. This ain't going to happen. All the property around me is RCE. Everybody's got acreage, we lived there for a reason. It's not going to change the multifamily. Ain't no multifamily around there, period.
Okay, well, as I say, at this point it is a land use change, I would suggest that you stay attuned to any future-
I will stay attuned. Remember my face, I'm going to be here every step of the way, buddy.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to appear before the commission on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I find the proposed future land use amendment consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the change of future land use designation from county rural to mixed-use, subject to the findings of the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lorindo, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Washington, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is the change of zoning, CHS Management, from T Transitional to MUESGT, Mixed-Use Eastshore Gateway Subdivision. The owner applicant is CHS Management Corp. The location is north of Ponkin Pines Road and east of Plymouth Sorento Road, and we have a staff presentation.
The applicant is proposing a rezoning from T Transitional District to MUESGT, Mixed-Use Eastshore Gateway District for approximately 15.82 acres. The subject properties are highlighted in yellow and located north of Ponkin Pines Drive and east of Plymouth Sorento Road. As a further frame of reference, the northernmost parcel was on the previously proposed Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment. The three subject properties are owned Transitional District, and the proposed zoning is compatible with the existing Mixed-Use Future Land Use on the two southern properties, and the proposed Mixed-Use Future Land Use on the northern property. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the proposed rezoning to MUESGT, and the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from T Transitional District to MUESGT, Mixed-Use Eastshore Gateway District, for the properties owned by CHS Management Corp., located north of Ponkin Pines Road and east of Plymouth Sorento Road. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? And did you say the applicant is not here?
It doesn't appear so.
Okay. All right, then we will not, obviously we'll not have an applicant's presentation. So we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I, I find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from T Transitional District to MUESGT, Mixed-Use Eastshore Gateway Subdistrict, for the properties owned by CHS Management Corp., located north of Ponkin Pines Road and east of Plymouth Sorento Road.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lorindo, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is the change of zoning, 380 Semirhan Commerce Place, from IL Light Industrial District to CR Regional Commercial District. The owner applicant is RAM SBC LLC. Location is north of East Semirhan Boulevard and west of Semirhan Commerce Place, and we have a staff presentation.
The applicant is proposing a rezoning from IL Light Industrial District to CR Regional Commercial District for approximately 1.85 acres. The subject area is highlighted in yellow and located west of Semirhan Commerce Place and north of East Semirhan Boulevard. The subject area is owned IL Light Industrial District, and the proposed CR zoning, or commercial regional zoning, is compatible with the existing commercial future land use on the area, on the subject area, as well as in the vicinity. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the proposed rezoning to CR Regional Commercial District, and the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from IL Light Industrial District to CR Regional Commercial District for the property owned by RAM SBC LLC, located north of East Semirhan Boulevard and west of Semirhan Commerce Place. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? And does the applicant have a presentation or is just available for questions? Okay, any questions of the applicant? Okay, then we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. To find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from T Transitional District to MUESGT, Mixed-Use Eastshore Gateway District for the properties owned by, oh, I'm sorry, from IL Light Industrial District to CR Commercial, Regional Commercial District for the property owned by RAM SBC LLC, located north of East Semirhan Boulevard and west of Semirhan Commerce Place.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gussler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lorindo, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a Comprehensive Plan, Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment, Northstar, from Commercial to Industrial, Max.0.6 FAR. Owner applicant is CLPF Cadence Northstar LLC. Location is north of Okoye-Popka Road and east of State Route 451, and we have a staff presentation.
The applicant is proposing a small-scale future land use amendment from Commercial to Industrial for approximately 8.53 acres. The subject area is highlighted in yellow and located north of Okoye-Popka Road and east of State Route 451. The subject area currently has CC Community Commercial zoning and IL Light Industrial zoning, and the applicant has applied for the IL zoning district for the southern parcel along Okoye-Popka Road, and that will be on the next agenda item. The proposed industrial future land use is compatible with the existing and proposed IL Light Industrial zoning district and properties in the surrounding area. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the proposed Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment to Industrial, and the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed future land use amendment consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the change of future land use designation from Commercial to Industrial, subject to the findings of the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff?
The only concern that I have about this particular piece of property is that's a pretty congested, becoming a pretty congested area, and it's right there at the ingress/egress from the highway. In addition, we're doing a lot of development south of there, so is that going to be a concern?
The applicant has submitted a major development plan for this area, or for this, for this area, as well as the larger parcel going up north to John's Road, and, you know, it's being reviewed at the moment, and so we will, you know, accommodate traffic studies, and I don't know if the applicant has any thought, you know, any statements for that, but we'll be reviewing that with the major development plan review.
Well, and especially because we've got, we've got a school, you know, just south of there, so, up on, pardon?
Yeah, the central Florida-
So that was kind of my concern.
Okay, other questions of staff? Okay, thanks, Phil. Does the applicant have a presentation?
I have a presentation.
Okay. All right, then we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion. I find the proposed future land use amendment consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and recommend approval of the change of future land use designation from Commercial to Industrial, subject to the findings of the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gussler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Our next item is the change of zoning, Northstar, from CC Community Commercial to IL Light Industrial. Owner applicant is CLPF Cadence Northstar LLC, located north of Okoye-Popka Road and east of State Route 451, and we have a staff presentation. We're working you hard tonight, Phil.
This is my last one, I promise. The applicant is proposing a rezoning from CC Community Commercial District to IL Light Industrial District for approximately 1.67 acres. The subject property is highlighted in yellow, located north of Okoye-Popka Road and east of State Route 451. The proposed IL Light Industrial zoning district is compatible with the surrounding area and the previously proposed industrial future land use. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the proposed rezoning to IL Light Industrial District, and the recommended motion for this evening is to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the proposed change of zoning from CC Community Commercial District to IL Light Industrial District for the property owned by CLPF Cadence Northstar LLC, located north of Okoye-Popka Road and east of State Route 451. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions of staff? Are any questions of the applicant?
Phil, I'm sorry. So this is just a smaller parcel of the one we just did the future land use for?
The-
So we're only changing the zoning on that small section of the one that we just approved the future land use on, correct?
Yes, so this is the subject area for the previously proposed-
Right.
-small-scale future land use amendment, and you can kind of see in this black line-
Right, we're just doing that bottom part, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions? Any applicant doesn't have a presentation, I believe? Okay, then we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, what's your pleasure?
I'm going to roll, I'll do it.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to find the proposed change of zoning consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and compatible with the category of the surrounding area, recommend approval of proposed change of zoning from CC Community Commercial District to IL Light Industrial District for the property owned by CLPF Cadence Northstar LLC, located north of Okoye-Popka Road and east of State Route 451.
Okay, very good, we have a motion by Commissioner Gussler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lorindo, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a major development plan, Apopka 429. Owner is Cypress Business Park LLC. Applicant is Kimley Horn and Associates, in care of Jason A. Lewis. Location is 4670 West Orange Blossom Trail, and we have a staff presentation.
Thank you. Phil did such a great job, he could do the next seven. I mean, I think that'd be awesome. Bobby Howe, Planning Manager. The subject property is located southwest of US 441, west of the Apopka Airport, and the major development plan details the development of infrastructure servicing and proposed industrial warehouse development totaling up to 2,471,000 square feet on 246.18 acres. The major development plan only proposes the development of infrastructure and grading for the site. The development of the warehouse buildings depicted on the plan is not proposed at this time, they're only shown as reference. An internal road is proposed for construction leading from Orange Circle, which is west of the Apopka Airport, westward and then northward, and then up to connect with Wesley Road. The intersection of Wesley Road and US 441 is proposed to be signalized at full project build-out. Right and left turn lanes leading onto US 441 from Wesley Road are proposed for construction. Stormwater is proposed for discharge into five ponds that are located throughout the site, you can see them on the plan scattered throughout the site. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Apopka 429 major development plan. If you have any questions, staff and the applicant are available.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, thanks. And does the petitioner have a presentation?
Uh, no, we're here for any comments or questions.
Okay, any questions of the petitioner? Okay, we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I find a major development plan consistent with the Land Development Code and recommended approval of the Apopka 429 major development plan.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Gussler, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Then we'll vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a major development plan, Orlando Beltway East. The owner is Orlando Beltway Associates. The applicant is James Hoffman, Professional Engineer, care of VHB. Location is west side of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, approximately one mile north of the intersection with Kelly Park Road and Plymouth-Sorrento Road. And we have a staff presentation.
Thank you. Once again, Bobby Howell. The applicant is requesting approval of a major development plan for property that's located on the west side of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, approximately a quarter mile north of the intersection of Kelly Park Road and Plymouth-Sorrento Road. The major development plan proposes the property, development of the property with a total of 202 units, of which 143 are single-family and 59 are townhomes, and a 2.4-acre non-residential tract in the southeast corner of the property, which is located right here. This is consistent with the approved master plan, which was approved by the city council in October of 2020. A minimum living area of 1,600 square feet is provided for the single-family units, and 1,200 square feet is provided for the townhome units. Lot widths for the single-family units range between 40 and 50 feet. In the Form Based Code, of which this is part of, there are no minimum and maximum lot size and width requirements. Access to the site is proposed via Plymouth-Sorrento Road. Roadway and pedestrian connections are provided to allow cross-access to the properties to the north and south via a little trail and then via road stubouts that will connect to the points to the north and south in the future. In accordance with the requirements of the Form Based Code, 20% of the site will remain as open space. Common recreational elements of open space include a community swimming pool, an internal trail system, passive open space and recreations areas, and the dedication of a bike trail along Plymouth-Sorrento Road. The right and left turn lanes will be constructed at the site entrance. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Orlando Beltway East major development plan. Staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff?
Yeah, I do. The, it says that there'd be a 30-foot wide strip for future right-of-way. Can you just go into that a little bit more, a little bit for me?
Sure, that was detailed on the approved master plan. It's right in this location here. The trail will be a part of that, but the reservation is for the future widening of Plymouth-Sorrento Road. And that was done on the property to the north. So as all the properties that develop along Plymouth-Sorrento Road within the Kelly Park Form Based Code area, they'll be required to dedicate 30 feet for future widening of Plymouth-Sorrento Road.
Okay, so the property that's being developed, right-of-path, has the same stipulation?
Yes, sir.
30-foot, okay, so it's all connected, I assume, eventually all the way down to Kelly Park?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, other questions? And does the applicant have a presentation? Any of you will give us your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner, fellow commissioners. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. My name is Jimmy Hoffman with VHB. We are the applicant. We are here together with D.R. Horton, who is the builder for the project. I'd like to thank staff for all their cooperation, hard work, working through this one. We agree with staff's findings in the report and their recommendation of approval. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move we find the major development plan consistent with the Land Development Code and Master Plan, and recommend approval of the Orlando Beltway East major development plan.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a major development plan, Advent Health Fudge Road Complex, Phases 1 and 2. The owner is the Advent Health Systems slash Sunbelt Inc. Applicant is Donald W. McIntosh Associates, Inc., in care of Cameron Holman, P.E. Location is 4051 Fudge Road, and we have a staff presentation.
Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Advent Health Fudge Road Complex, Phases 1 and 2 major development plan. Project parcel is located south of US 441 and north of Hogshead Road. The Advent Health Fudge Road Complex, Phases 1 and 2 major development plan proposes the development of warehouse medical supply distribution facilities. There is a discrepancy in the staff report regarding the square footage being proposed. To clarify, Phase 1 comprises of 76,168 square feet for Building 1 and 76,179 square feet for Building 2 on 13.9 acres, while Phase 2 consists of 303,040 square feet of building area on 25 acres. This development will have access along Hogshead Road. The plan also shows an internal spine road providing access from north to south. The applicant proposes Southern Magnolia Sycamore, Southern Live Oak Bald Cypress trees within Phases 1 and 2, along with other understory trees. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff?
I have just, just one. This, this area was all growers, so I'm assuming there are a lot of chemicals in that soil.
Part of the development review is to provide for geotechnical and environmental studies that we've reviewed, and it's been deemed fine.
Thank you, just wanted to be sure.
Sure.
Okay, other questions?
Yes, you said the access will be from Hogshead Road. Is there any access from 441?
No, sir, no, no access on 441 being proposed right now.
Right, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
I'm here to do not, um, let's, I hear available answering questions.
Okay, any questions of the applicant? Okay, then we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Find the Advent Health Fudge Road Complex, Phases 1 and 2, major development plan consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code, and recommend approval of the major development plan based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibit.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gussler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a final development plan and plat approval for Windward Hills. The owner is Windward Hills LLC, care of HFZ Development. Applicant is Luke M. Kasson, P.E., Classon, P.E. Location is 4145 West Orange Blossom Trail. We have a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Bobby Howell. The subject property is located at 4145 West Orange Blossom Trail and is being processed under the 1993 Land Development Code. Development is subject to the standards and conditions set forth in PD Ordinance Number 2508, which was adopted under, on August 3, 2016, which was under the auspices of the 1993 Land Development Code. That's why you're considering a final development plan and a plat tonight on this one. The final development plan and plat propose the construction of 101 single-family units on 67.76 acres. Consistent with Ordinance Number 2508 and the approved master plan, minimum lot widths of 70 feet are provided. Access to the subdivision is from north Orange Blossom Trail and through the adjacent Chandler Estates subdivision to the north. Two lots totaling 3.41 acres in size are located adjacent to north Orange Blossom Trail and are reserved for commercial development. Those lots are located right here and here. Stormwater retention is proposed on tracks, H and I. Consistent with the approved master plan, Track K is one acre in size and is reserved for a park and recreation area, which consists of a play structure and grassed areas. The plat is also considered for approval tonight, and it's consistent with Florida Statute 177, specifically regarding plating. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, and the recommended motion tonight is to recommend approval of the Windward Hills Final Development Plan and Plat. Staff and applicant are here for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, thanks. Does the applicant have a presentation?
No presentation, we're here to answer any questions.
Okay, very good. Any questions of the applicant? Okay, then we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I find the final development plan and plat consistent with the Land Development Code and Master Plan slash preliminary development plan, and recommend approval of the Windward Hills Final Development Plan and Plat.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lrendo. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a plat for Hamrick Estates. Owner is Wakiva Point LLC. Applicant is Jeff Summit, P.E. Location is 3220 Pittman Road. We have a staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, Bobby Howell. The applicant is requesting approval of a plat for Hamrick Estates, which is a 111-unit subdivision located east of Pittman Road and west of Mount Sterling Road. The plat is consistent with the approved lot sizes and the approved major development plan, construction site plan, and with Florida Statute 177. Development Review Committee recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Hamrick Estates plat. Staff and applicant are here for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff?
I have a question. The, I live in that neighborhood, so I was just curious. I drove up that Pittman Road.
Yeah.
So what's the endpoint vision on that road? Is it being widened or? Because you had to go drive back to this.
For Pittman Road?
Project.
Yeah, it's not going to be widened. It's going to be constructed under the same right-of-way width, I believe, that was originally there. But it's got the lime rock base on it right now, so they're in the finishing touches of putting the pavement on it.
So it's not being widened?
No.
No. Interesting.
Okay, further questions? Okay, thanks. Okay, does the applicant have a presentation? Okay, very good. We'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I find the plat consistent with the Land Development Code and major development plan, and recommend approval of the Hamrick Estates plat.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lrendo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Okay, our next item is a major development plan, Plymouth-Sorrento Assemblage Subdivision. Owner is the Klebsig Family Trust, Klebsig Dittisar Life Estate, Klebsig Joanne Life Estate, Min Sum Cho, Hong Sik Kim, and Diak Wa Kim. The applicant is Palti Homes Company LLC, care of Aaron Struckmeyer. Location is east of State Route 429, west of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, and south of Joey McGuckin Road. We have a staff presentation.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Plymouth-Sorrento Assemblage Subdivision Major Development Plan. The project site is located east of State Route 429, west of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, and south of Joey McGuckin Road. It is within the Kelly Park Interchange Form Based Code area. Located in the southern terminus of the KPI Form Based Code area, the Plymouth-Sorrento Assemblage Residential Subdivision Major Development Plan proposes the development of 179 single-family residences with a mix of minimum lot widths of 34 feet, 40 feet, and 55 feet. 34 feet and 40 feet wide, 40 feet wide lots will have a minimum living area of 1,300 square feet and 1,500 square feet for lots with 55 feet in width. The Plymouth-Sorrento Assemblage Residential Subdivision will have access via full access driveway on Plymouth-Sorrento Road. The plan also shows a connection to future development on the north to the Planter Affair that will connect to Kelly Park Road. The applicant is dedicating a 30-foot wide strip along Plymouth-Sorrento for future right-of-way widening. While 20% of the site is required to be open space, the plan proposes 11.9 acres of open space, which is approximately 23% of the site. The MDP also shows an eight-foot wide multipurpose trail along Plymouth-Sorrento Road and internal to the site, a passive park path with benches along the perimeter of the stormwater pond and the southwest portion of the subdivision, a pool, a cabana, and a recreational field. The landscaping plan shows a six-foot tall wall within a 10-foot wide landscape buffer proposed along Plymouth-Sorrento Road that includes shrubs and alternating trees. A 25-foot wide landscape buffer on the southern property boundary consists, consisting of six-foot tall opaque fence, includes live oaks and shrubs as well. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the major development plan. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff?
I do. Did you say there's going to be a road connecting this project to something to the north, towards the north?
Correct, this road right here. So the, the general plan for the KPI is that there is a road that will connect the north to the, the north to the southern terminus of the Form Based Code area. It started with the approval with the Publix Major Development Plan.
Oh, so it was in conjunction with the Publix Development Plan, you said, right?
It began with it.
It began with it.
Correct.
So I presume it still exists, right?
I'm sorry?
Never mind. This road that we're talking about here, so there are properties, many properties between here and Publix.
Yes.
So are you telling me this road's going to connect all the way up to Publix?
That is the plan. It should connect all the way to Kelly Park Road.
Interesting.
Okay, further questions? Okay, thanks. Does the applicant have a presentation?
No, we don't have a presentation. We agree with staff's presentation here. Do you have any questions?
Okay, very good. Any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. Then we'll close the presentations, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? LLC. The applicant is Kelma Weeks Civil Engineering, Inc., care of Selby G. Weeks, P.E. Location is 1480, 1500, and 1520 West Orange Blossom Trail. We have a staff presentation.
Again, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Legacy Station 2 replat. The site is located south of US 441 and east adjacent of the current Panera Restaurant. This is a redrawing of the lot boundaries for two of the three lots in the subdivision. Lot 1, if you can remember, has been approved for an urgent care center. Lot 2 is currently undergoing development review for restaurant and dental office uses, and Lot 3 has been approved for an imaging center. This replat also depicts 10-foot wide underground easements already established under separate documents. Each lot has access to 441 via an access easement depicted on the plat, and additional access easements are provided to each lot property owner for the maintenance of the master stormwater pond. The DRC recommends approval, and the recommended motion is to recommend approval of the replat. Staff is available for questions.
Okay, any questions of staff? And does the applicant have a presentation?
The applicant is not here today.
Okay. And seeing none, we'll close the presentations and open the public hearing. Anyone wish to appear before the commission on this item? And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. Find the Legacy Station 2 replat consistent with the Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan, and recommend approval of the replat, subject to the review and approval of the city surveyor and city engineer.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Gussler. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lrendo. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Then we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, and that carries unanimously. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business?
Jim, I don't know if that gentleman wanted to speak or not.
Yeah, did you want to speak on any item?
This is a new experience for me. I live in Plymouth-Sorrento Road.
Okay, if you would give us your name and address for the record, please.
Across the street from the planning to do the development. But the presentation for the people are really poor and lousy. They show you a map and you don't know where it's located. And being in Apopka for 20 years, I cannot recognize why they're planning to do that. And being in Apopka for 20 years, I cannot recognize why they're planning to do. No one mentioned the impact of the development over the current city. I feel that the committee here say yes, whatever they're planning to do. Somebody need to get the philosophy of the Apopka. What will be the future of Apopka? What will be the future of the people who live in Apopka? We are for many years here, and really disappointed with the way this meeting is carried on. It should be a big map of the Apopka there, telling where the development is going to be, how much money is going to be expended, what is the impact over the community, how many car is going to be. Here is nothing there. Say approve, vamos.
Well.
A, a big group here, I don't know how many million dollars they're planning to do. And I don't know, you know?
The only thing I-
Really sad, but I'm sorry, but I'm really disappointed.
Okay, well, I, I'm sorry that you are. Many of the things that are on, many of these things that are on the agenda, this is one phase, and there'll be other phases that will come before the, in these public hearings. And so, like when we do a land use change, there are typically actual plans that'll come behind that for whatever is going to be developed. And those plans are not really a part of some of the, these first items. But I understand your concern, and the only thing I can suggest is do the best you can to keep up with, with what the city publicizes and what's coming before the Planning Commission and the city council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Any other new business? There'll be no further business to come before the commission will be adjourned.